I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to Monday, December the 4th, 2017 work session. Town staff related items, number one, presentation from People's Inc. on the new market tax credit. Continue discussing with the fixed term financing option for the new police department. Joe?
Mr. Mayor, I talked to Jennifer McDonald this morning. She was unable to make contact with People Inc., so we're basically, no representatives here tonight. She wasn't able to make contact, even schedule anything for a future date. So, I told her that, I guess, you know, her idea is that it probably would be in January. So, it's an unfortunate thing that we couldn't get them here and discuss the new market tax credits. I know BJ has put some more information together on the, on the fixed term pricing on the financing option. I didn't know if council still wanted to look at that while we had...
Well, let's take the opportunity and look at it.
Okay.
We were kind of weighing out both, but I think we had a pretty good consensus last week. We wanted to talk about it a little bit more and get a feeling on it, so. BJ?
Yes, sir. Evening. So, basically, I put together a few different scenarios based on the, last time we discussed, the scenario where we may take the loan that was due from the general fund to the electric fund and repay that from fund balance and then try to finance the police department and the other projects that was included in the market tax credit. Based on that scenario, I went ahead and put together other scenarios here to show what would happen if the interest rate were to change or remain the same. And just to briefly go over the comparisons, if the, if the interest rate were to remain the same after seven to 10 years when we have to refinance the new market tax credit program, the town would recognize a net benefit of $5.3 million when compared to financing the full amount through the fixed term. If the interest rate went up 1%, then that benefit would lower to $2.99 million. And then going up another 2% from there, it's be about $538,000. Anything, any percentage over 2.15% increase over the next seven to 10 years would result in a, a debt loss for the town when prepared to do the market tax credit. We're currently being offered the rate of 2.65% for 30 years, which is a very good term. It's hard to say if that would be available or not be available in the seven to 10 years.
What scenario would you...
My recommendation would, well, it would be to go with the fixed term financing over the new market tax credit. All of these are just comparing the, the fixed rate to the new market tax credit program. And it's just to kind of give an outline of what could happen and what tax increases may be necessary if, if the rates were to increase over the next several years.
Joe, before we start on this roundtable, what is the town manager's opinion? I know that you've been studying it and looking at it.
Well, I favor the fixed, obviously due to the less risk involved, but it's really council's decision.
Sure.
But I, I, you know, me and BJ both recommend the fixed, obviously due to the less risk. And we'll have control over what our terms are for the near foreseeable future, so.
Gene?
Well, I like the fixed rate myself, too. I've said that all along because you never know what these tax credits is going to happen to those that could have here today, go tomorrow. My biggest issue, I mean, I guess, can I add something?
Sure, yes, exactly.
You know, going back to, here's some of those scenarios you had. In the last, last work session, you gave us the list of the money that we had in each one of our fixed asset funds as far as water, electric, sewer, and enterprises. We had a $1.5 billion in our general fund. Now, if we take out that, how much is it, $600,000?
It'd be about $600,000.
About $600,000, that's only going to leave us $900,000 surplus in our, our general fund. So, I'm not too enthused about that. If you go down the list that you gave us on this, I got it in front of me. Electric fund, we're already in the hole $772,000 from our obligations to our three months reserve.
Correct.
We use that. Go to the water, we, we only got $315,000 left in reserves after the three month obligation. You go to the sewer, we got $1.2, that's more than any other. And then if we go down to the refuse, we're in the hole $600,000. So, I'm not in favor of taking any more, any more money out of our general fund to fund any new projects, including the actual money for the police department, whether it's 2.65% or, and/or whether we do the tax credit. Because I don't want to see us keep drawing all this money out of reserves up to the point where we don't have enough to cover if things...
Or the reserve. We won't have enough.
With emergencies, you know. With, with the electric fund alone, we're already $772,000, basically in the red.
Well, and by repaying the loan earlier, it would help out the electric.
I know.
It's, I understand.
But yeah, that just puts more, still got to get $600,000 from somewhere.
Yes, sir.
That comes from the 2.65% or through this. And since we're already $752,000 in the red with, with our obligation, even though we've come back to 1.3, it's still not going to give us a whole lot of reserve either way.
That's correct.
So, I'm really, I like the 2.65, but I'm not too in favor of taking any more money out of the reserve fund because that's why it's there in case we do have emergencies. One transformer, as we talked last time, could be a half a million a bet. And right now, like I said, we're already $772,000 in the red.
If we were buying a transformer, it would, transferring the money from the general fund to the electric fund would help in that scenario.
Yeah, well, I know in that case, but I'd rather wait until we need it and not automatically do...
Certainly respect that. And there were other scenarios that didn't take the, the money from fund balance. So, you had maybe an option.
I'll ask a question on the scenario in a second, but just to clarify, Councilman T. Walz, give me a second here. Councilman T. Walz comments about the reserves. For clarification, BJ, there is funds, for the total funds, we, we have enough to cover three months' reserve between our government funds, electric, water, sewer, and refuse right now, right? The three months' reserve.
Well, standing, standing alone, the electric, the electric and the refuse do not have the three month reserve after you take out the encumances.
No, no, before that. So, the, also the outstanding obligations, the three month reserve that's required for our audit, there are funds there, correct?
Yes, before the, before we take out the purchase orders.
Purchase orders for what?
For the carrying, of what we're carrying over.
Have you got this?
Yep, that's my apartment. That's, that includes the outstanding obligations, correct?
The, the outstanding obligations are the purchase order.
Okay. Plus, the three months' reserve still leaves us in a positive. So, in other words, we still have, meeting all of our obligations, meeting the three months' reserve requirement, we still have surplus in funds.
Not for the electric or the refuse?
No, all together.
All together, we, yes, we do.
Okay. By just doing some of the, doing some of the quick math, by about $1.8 million, somewhere in that ballpark?
Yeah, that sounds about right, yeah. I agree with that.
Okay, all right. Well, I just wanted to clarify that. So, that's above and beyond our three months' reserve. We have $1.8 million there, okay. Regarding to the scenarios of going with People's Inc. versus the fixed rate finance, I, can you take me, walk me through what you said right in the very beginning about the, what we're potentially leaving on the table if we go with People's Inc. is $5 million, broadly?
If the rates were to remain the same as what we're, what's being offered now, it would be roughly $5.3 million.
And the, the rate with People's Inc. is a fixed rate or is not, it's a variable?
It's variable. After seven to 10 years, we would have to see what's available at that point in time.
So, what's the savings that we get by writing off, with the whole, whole point going with People's Inc. was to be able to write off a certain portion of that loan, right? Or have that...
Roughly 30%.
30%?
Of the amount that we borrowed.
Is that taken into account the $5 million that you're saying that we could potentially be leaving on the table?
Yeah, yeah, the, the, yeah, after the 30% paying interest for seven to 10 years, $5.3 million is the bottom line.
$5.3 million, so even if that percentage fluctuated, we still have about $5 million to play with for it to be equal to a fixed rate loan? That's what I was trying to understand.
If, if the 2.65% was, is available in seven to 10 years, if the rates remain the same, if the $5.3 million is what we would be looking at as a benefit going with the new market tax credit program.
And let's say the rates doubled and that would be roughly...
Two million, two and a half million? If the rates, if the rates were to, if the rates were to go up, let's see here, 3%, we would see an additional expense of $2 million, so we'd be in...
We'd have $3 million on the table going with that?
No, we would have the loss, the loss of $2 million.
So, it would flip to $7 million?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was trying to understand, sorry I said that earlier. No, this is great. This is, this is wonderful detail.
BJ, what's the tipping point there? Is it like 3.8 or so where that, that tipping point is where we're risking losing more off of the seven year than it, than off of the 30 year?
It's, yeah, right around 3.8, that is correct, so.
Jake, did you have anything else? I've seen you kind of putting through there a little bit. If I can come back to you.
Yeah, will you come back to me?
Okay. Gary?
I'm for the fixed term financing.
John, did you have anything else that you needed to add?
I have another question for BJ.
Yes, sir.
The payback of the $600,000 that general fund owes to electric, would that bring electric over the three month minimum requirement for it to buffer that it wanted to...
Bring it right at the threshold?
Bill, would you like to add anything or anything?
Well, it really shows that the new market credit, tax credit, is a savings. It's only when it tips at, I'm trying to pick it up here, BJ, I think it's...
I can tell.
It's, it's right here, would you drop? The fixed rate is 21, as you calculate here, 21 million, 21 and a half million. The new market tipping point is 23, 876. On what percent, I'm trying to pick up.
The...
So, your first scenario is the rate stays at 2.58 between both fundings. The new market credit saves us, and you said 5 million, but your numbers show me about So, it's only a matter of, you bet on, do you bet on a change or not? So, do you go with the fixed rate or do you bet on, or take a chance that the rates are going to double in the next seven years?
Yes, sir.
With the next presidential election? Could have a merit?
I'm just saying, that's, that's what the numbers show me.
Yes, it does.
I mean, that's what you do with variable rates.
Yeah. What do you, what do you prefer? New market or election?
No, I'm not ready to go with the side one right now.
Okay. Take a...
I'm sorry, sometimes it takes me a few seconds to get it, to come back through. So, 30-year fixed term, 24.4 million is roughly the debt service, the life loan. New market tax credit, 2.65% is roughly 19.1 million.
Yes, sir.
And when I flipped, when I reviewed the last tab, it was the new market tax credit program at 3.65% at 21, roughly 21.4 million of total debt service.
21.4, yes.
Okay. So, that's what I was trying to understand. So, this scenario is based on if the interest rates went to 3.65, it would go to 21.42 million versus our 30, 30-year fixed term, which would be 24.4 million. So, you still, even if the rates went up to 3.65, we're still saving approximately $3 million.
Yeah, you get around, around the 4% and that's where we're, that's where it's kind of a break even.
That's what I said, 3.8.
But even at 4.65%, so that's why I got confused with, with Councilman Connolly's 3.8, even at 4.65%, the debt service is still less...
Yes, sir.
Than if we financed it on a fixed. So, the interest rate could nearly double and we still would be saving, right?
Yeah, 2.65, we would have to go up 2.15% of roughly four, I'm sorry, four, I guess 4.8 now, I'm going, 4.8, not, not 3.8, 4.8%. So, yes.
Okay, that's what I got confused on with the 3.8, no problem. I'm just making sure that we're all on the same page, that, that it would, it would pretty much have to go up past 5% for us to, that's how much we have to risk, in other words, to go from 2.65 up to 5% before we, just to break even, before it became a bad deal for us.
Right. You guess Gene? You guess Gene? He's been, oh, Jake?
Pulling back to the 2.65, remember Jennifer said that we had a time delay, a time span on that?
She said that there was not a, a timeframe.
Was that supposed to be 2.65 or...
She didn't give us an ending date, she said that there was, she said that there was not a, a deadline.
It's locked into prime? We don't know. I was hoping Mr. McDonald would be here.
One thing I just like to mention, I don't know if y'all seen the email today from Joe right here, saying we're running $1.3 million behind on our electrical projects here, called it the weather. So, we're running three, 1.3 billion under what we projected for last year that we were going to receive, am I right on that?
Yeah, that is correct. We're hopefully that, because of mild weather.
Yeah.
Bill?
So, that's what'll affect us. Thanks, Art.
Yes, sir.
Well, there's another piece to this whole thing. When I looked at that 3.8 million after seven years, on that, we might be able to come in with a fixed rate to cover the remainder, whatever's left with People's Inc. And that hasn't been discussed. You follow what I'm saying?
Yes, I'm sorry. The, the remainder.
You mean like after the seven year period that we can lock into a fixed rate at that time and not look down 20, 20 years down the road?
That just depends on what the interest rate will be at that point.
Well, that's what I wanted, I wanted People's Inc. to explain that to us.
But you've got to go through two things, if I can say so.
Sounds good.
If 2.65 goes up, then People's Inc.'s, they're going to go up equally, pretty much. It's not going to stay constant on one and not the other.
Yeah, but we got, you got four or five million dollars you're planning with it, you're going to be to the good. You can...
At today, on today's numbers.
And you can fix the rest of it out.
At today's numbers, but if this thing falls through, it could happen, then we're ready back for a market again. And if it's timed, I mean, again, we don't know what the 2.65, you say you don't know, neither does Jennifer. And if that 2.65 goes to 3.6, or 3.5, or whatever, then we're going to be in the hole way more than what we are and we think we're going to be safe.
BJ, we're going to be locked into this for 30 years? I heard 30 years last week or week before.
Yes, 30 years is, is the fixed term that's being offered.
That's the fixed term, so. Another scenario is we go with the People's Inc. and we do the seven year, we go out and we find out we've got to pay a 5%. And then four years later, another offer comes through at three and a half, we can go back to three and a half. So, it's, it's flipped a coin today and wish for the best 30 years now, so.
Yeah, so I think it's impossible to project 30 years out, but...
I mean, this was, like, our town manager says, this locks us in and it locks the loaning institution in to where it cannot go up, it cannot go down, it's even killed it, but that's for council to decide.
So, for me, I'm more concerned, I mean, I still kind of, I'm with Councilman Seelock on, still trying to make a decision on that, but I really was appealing to being with what BJ presented last time, with the incremental tax increase to be able to cover this and paying some of the principal down on it, so that we didn't have a major tax type, tax increase. That still appeals to me.
Yeah, that still appeals to me. John, what do you...
I'm still on the dock for a scenario A that BJ's presented on this report as well, which is one we discussed last time. There's a lot more variables with the new market cap credit program. As Councilman T. Walz pointed out, we don't even know if program's going to be around in seven years, and so that would be a leap of faith in and of itself. We definitely have, I think, the resources available to make it more of a more conservative, safer option that doesn't expose the town to higher risks.
Joe, would this have to be put on for a vote to see which way we'd go with this? Or...
Yeah, the...
I mean, if, if some of us say new market, some of us say...
It's either that or...
...horse is not here.
I hate to kick the can down the road, but we could try to take the next work session on January 2nd to try to get People Inc. in here to answer council's questions so that they can make a more educated decision.
Even have them here, could they project out 30 years?
No, they could, no.
Could they project out four years?
No, not at all.
Whether it's going to, you know, I mean, the offerings was offered to the town and the county. The county is using the new market tax credit for their other projects that they're, they're involved in, and we just, I guess, gentlemen, we just need to make a move.
Well, the biggest question for People, People's Inc. is whether or not it's a variable or fixed 2.65, right?
No, after, after the seven to 10 years, we have to find our end money. People's Inc. is out of exits.
They exit, we go to...
So, it's essentially, if the program remains in place and if we get that 30% write-off, that's really where the savings comes.
Correct.
And then we just have to ride with whatever the interest rate happens to be in seven years from now. So, it's guessing in as a break even, essentially 4.8.
Yeah, and it's, if the seven years starts once the projects are completed, so if it takes, you know, one, two, three years, that's why I'm saying seven to 10 years, you know, hopefully three years we have everything completed.
And that's on the open market?
Yes, sir.
Now, also BJ, we're going to take a bigger bite out of our budget every year for the next seven years versus what we would be taking out and for the new market tax credit.
Yeah, that was the, the goal and anticipation is what we would do, is as the debts are being paid off, we're going to allocate those funds to the...
Let's run around table, Gene.
Wait, I have another question I have. How much money have we already borrowed? Do you have any idea?
We haven't borrowed any money.
Now, Jennifer says we have borrowed it. We're engineering and other things through the new market.
We have submitted invoices, correct, BJ?
Oh, we have submitted invoices?
Well, she may be referring to the way Trent Farquhar put it, what we did with the...
Well, I know she was referring to some money that we've already got.
Police run.
Yeah, we, we actually paid that for, to, to Warren County, but for any of the town projects, the police department, we have borrowed any.
So, the question is, is new market or...
So, did you ask me to give you about...
Yes, sir.
2.65, that fixed rate?
Let John go.
Okay, John?
I've already said that point A.
Fixed.
Which is, which is the fixed.
Gary, you've already said fixed. Bill?
I'm not ready to slide yet.
Jake?
Well, if we're talking like what Councilman Connolly's saying with the payment of the principal upfront with the scenario A, then I'm for it, but if we're just doing 2, 2.65 and then starting with interest payments, then I'm less interested, I'd be more, I'd have to take the risk of People's Inc.
You're also talking about, your scenario says you're going to raise the tax rate one penny every year for the next three years.
The, the, each scenario was different.
You go to 2.65, your scenario is that one, two, three.
One, two, and a half. How round numbers are.
Joe, let's put it on then, Jennifer, next week and put both scenarios.
Well, do we have to do it this quick?
Well, there's, I'm, was it one month they wanted an answer before?
That's what Jennifer had requested, but she had also said that there wasn't a deadline.
And she, BJ said there was no deadline, according to Jennifer.
If there's no deadline, then well, what, Joe, we want to bring Jennifer in or...
Yeah, if there isn't, what we can do is we can make contact with Jennifer tomorrow, make sure that there is no deadline on the fixed. And if that is the case, then what we could do is try to get People Inc. scheduled for January 2nd, which is our next work session, to get them in here for that we can do some comparisons between People Inc. and the fixed rate that Jennifer's offering. Because really, at that point, I think with both parties in the, in the room, we should be able to get all our questions answered.
Well, I, you know, I agree with that, but I mean, you've got Bill and Jake not ready to make a decision.
I mean, I'm okay with it because I like People's Inc., so.
You do like People's Inc.?
Yeah, I've always liked that, getting rid of that 30, $3 million, sorry, off the top. And I like the slow interest that you would pay for seven years, even though there is a risk, in both, both ways is a risk, and I'm just...
My question still hasn't been resolved yet. At the end of that seven years, can we while the market's like, okay, I want, I just want to pay them off and borrow it over here?
Yes.
That, that's what we have to do.
Yeah, we don't have...
That is the, what we have to do. After seven years, we have to go to the market and finance off the remainder of People's Inc. minus 30%, whatever that amount is, right?
That's correct.
And that was the concern Mr. T. Walz had was the uncertainty of the market.
The standard. People do it every day.
But when you have five mil, yes, exactly, when you have $5 million on the table to play with, you may lose a couple million of that, which you'll have to realize. But anyway, I'll see if we can get People Inc. in, Joe, and we'll discuss this more.
Sure, if, you know, save the interest, we'll go down.
Any good.
If you take a shot, we can refinance and then you'd be in that...
BJ, that's a very jobless...
I mean, people do it all the time. It's not like...
That's an excellent job, sure. That's why I threw it out there that we, and we could buy it in my early 4, we could put back, we do it all the time, so. All right, let's move on to number two, proper living partnership, proper rezoning requests. Jeremy?
Thanks, Mayor. I have a few slides to run here on this. First, I always wanted to cover the basis for proppers. I'm not sure how much, how many have of proppers, so I'm going to be quoting a lot. But there's a quick list here of the 10 must knows about proppers. First, proppers, which are also called conditional zoning in the state code, they're made during the rezoning process. So, they can be cash or non-cash proppers, number two, and their intent is to mitigate the impacts of new development. Proppers, of course, have to be voluntarily made by the land donor, and proppers run the land and are legally binding, essentially the same as if you adopted organs. Proppers must be reasonable and related to the impacts of the new development, and the new state code has got much strict, stricter language, also uses the terminology specifically attributable, so anything you accept has to be proportionally related to those specific impacts of this development project. And some of the, the language changes in the state code really came from some localities that I guess were abusing the propper system, you know, enacting takings on property owners that weren't reasonable. Six, proppers, if they're off-site, they must be, have a direct benefit on the new development, so this is new language to the state code. You can't have them proffered for something that's there across town that has no correlation with their project, by the way. Number seven, proppers, if cash or land donation, must be for a project that's located on the locality's capital improvement program. So, if you don't have the, initially, that's okay, but before you can accept the money and use the money, you have to add that to your CIP. And proppers may not obligate a locality to do something they want to otherwise do. And proppers must be consistent with existing plans and codes, and they can't give us for impermissible modifications. So, what's a permissible modification? That would be a special exception, for example, something that's written in the code, permissible by the code. Proppers, if lacking, may not be the reason for denial. So, if they don't offer a particular propper, and this is more of a play on words really, but it's, it's how you justify your decision, it needs to be based on the deficiencies of the, well, it needs to be based on the impact that they're presenting as causing, not the lack of the propper specifically. So, I guess... So I guess use caution when you're speaking about proppers and that regards. Here's a picture of a proper or limited partnerships property. All this outlined here is six hundred four acres that was rezoned in two thousand and fourteen. And this, this red outline is the shape of the parcel, the subject parcel for this particular request. Of course, to the north here, you've got the interstate. On the east side, Shannon Door Shore Road. And to the south, coming through here is Happy Creek Road. So it's a little more evident on the aerial illustration here. The new criminal, proposed criminal justice academy is going up over in this area. And here's Progress Drive, where it's gonna extend the east-west connector. Proposed to come through this little pipe stem here off Shannon Door Shore Road. And eventually come up and tie in with Eighth Street. So a quick background, the original proppers that, what we have today, which are approved, they were approved in two thousand and ten with rezoning of proper or limited partnerships property. And at that time, it did not receive a favorable recommendation from the planning commission, but then once council was all approved. Six hundred four acres were then annexed in around two thousand and fourteen. And the applicant later after that submitted a revision to the, to these proppers, the R1A proppers. Part of that came up through discussion in two thousand and fourteen during the year-long annexation process, where there were some concerns raised with the legality of some of the existing proppers. So the, this was tabled by the applicant in June of two thousand and sixteen after we had a joint work session between the planning commission and town council. And then the applicant brought that back to the town in August. And the most recent revision is dated November eighth. You can see down here below too, just to reference. We've worked with proper or limited partnership on a variety of different things over the last few years. And those are listed there. So I've got a, just a quick couple of slides here. It's very abbreviated, and certainly doesn't get into every aspect, but you know, it's like a before and after scenario. So here's two thousand and ten proppers, and I'm just hitting on the key things again. Three hundred and twenty single-family residential dwelling units, thirty percent open space. There was a proffer requirement that the houses had to be certified Energy Star. There was neighborhood, neighborhood park proffered. And then there's, there were tap fee credits proffered, which kept the tap fees paid by proper or limited partnership at ten thousand dollars. And then there was a, that below that is, that credit also applied to the first ninety-nine houses. So since they weren't paying the per-unit cash proffer, there was, proffer stipulated in accounting, so all those credits will then get re-implied. And so you might see in the notes there that really there wouldn't be any per-unit proffers paid until you're somewhere in the, you know, one, twenty, one thirty range, depending on how that accounting, accounting worked out. So there's cash proffers of about one point seven million dollars. There's land dedication credit. So it's written in there that we have to give credits to proper or limited partnership for the value of the right-of-way land, as well as, well, portion of property along Shannon Door Shore Road, which probably would be right-of-way as well. And so that was written in there. There's also two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars cash that would potentially go towards a traffic signal at Happy Creek Road and Shannon Door Shore Road. Right turn lane on Happy Creek Road. There's also left turn lane with that, depending on the school. And up to three point one million dollars in the per-unit cash proffers, which said we could only use it for the Waitren Parkway. And then there was the east-west connector itself. They required to build phase one of that in the one scenario. And then there's a second scenario in there where they would also build phases two through four, but we would give them a credit for the cost they incurred during that. And that would take place if the town decided to build phase five, which is a more expensive section crossing the railroad coming to Eighth Street.
Sure, Jeremy, I, I didn't read it, but I didn't, it was too vague or long. But going back to those, which ones are there today in this scenario synopsis we have? And which one are, have been eliminated in this?
That's what the next slide's for.
Okay.
This is what we have today in an abbreviated nutshell. And this is what's proposed. And I've kind of looked at the same, you can see the, what's struck and out and removed in here, as well as in, we typically use the yellow to represent new stuff, so this is the yellow to represent like new things that were added. So the proposed proffers aren't changing the density of three hundred and twenty single-family residential dwelling units. That's the same. It's still open space, still neighborhood park. They're proposing to eliminate the Energy Star certification requirement for, for, that's a good thing. But they feel that's, they don't really fully understand the true cost of, of going through that process at the time and that can maybe be down under the new proffer requirements. We really can't require that under today's laws. Then there's tap fee credits, and that's, if you look in your booklets that we gave you, in the very back of that, there's the legal review by the town attorney. So I encourage you, if you haven't read that already, read through that. But that talks about, I guess, the number one legal concern with the current proffers, and that's the, this tap fee credit system that was devised to sort of offset the, what seemed to be a very high per-unit cash proffer amount. In the fine print, that was being substantially reduced by other credits, land credits as well as the tap fee credits. There's also some financial scenarios in the back of the legality documents. And that would be good as well to... The, the school proffers aren't really changing, but they're, they're proposing to shift the payment on the last half of the units versus the first half. And it was explained that they're trying to build free up more cash revenue to get things started, where they're gonna pay overall the same amount on the last half. So if you look back here, five thousand five hundred per unit, for every unit. The new one's eleven thousand for the last hundred and sixty minutes, which comes out to the same amount. County did not have a concern with that.
But they don't, you asked us a question, do they have a problem?
No, I'm sure that they reviewed it, and both Doug Stanley and Taren spoke to me about it, and they, they weren't concerned about it.
I'll let it get to one seventy-six.
And so they still have the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is proffered towards a signal at Happy Creek and Shannon Door Shore Road. There's also language added in there. If you decide we don't wanna do that, for example, if we do the flyover, we can use those funds towards the Waitren Parkway. So that was something new. It's a good thing, if we don't have a traffic light. And then two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars also for a traffic light at the entrance development. For the Waitren Parkway. When I say the Waitren Parkway, I mean, I guess if you use it towards the...
Flyover?
Paying down the, what we have, or designing the flyover, going towards construction of the flyover, which is phase two of the Waitren Parkway. Then there's a right turn lane that's proposing, Happy Creek Road, that again, that's not changing here. They're proposing a left turn lane at the east-west connector in Shannon Door Shore Road. That's it. Actually, originally when they came in, they proffered a couple other improvements in here. But as with the new proffer laws, that would be directly attributable to the impacts of this development, which is the three hundred and twenty houses. We had to remove those in discussion because they weren't directly attributable to this project. But they would be needed, and we, likely to be things we would see in the rezoning of the six hundred and four acre property. And the east-west connector, phase one, they're still obligated to build that, but we're striking out in the proposal, we're striking out the rest of it, which is something that would need to be addressed when the, when the adjacent property develops, also in by proper or limited partnership.
Or is phase one built all the way to the varicated lane or past it?
Varicated lane, most likely would not be impacted by this...
This secret portion.
This particular portion.
It's just that portion showing the red.
Yeah, we'll go back to the picture. Phase one would be...
Right there.
There's two segments of phase one, actually. There would be first segment, which comes about right here. And then there would be a second segment, which would come up right here. And if you look at the exhibit, by the applicant, they also have an interpartial connector here.
Now, this is varicated lane right here on the left, right?
Varicated lane is right here, yes, right there.
So where, in, in, in phase one, where would the actual road stop? Use your red marker there.
It shows, originally it was, it was coming through here more in this orientation, but they've re-engineering, I guess, the plans that were just gonna come up in this orientation, which is following the, the low land, sort of a intermittent stream through here. So they're gonna come up there, and then it terminates somewhere in this location. And then eventually it would be continued. And there was a, it also shows an interpartial connector down in this location. Hundred forty-nine acres. So planning commission recommended approval on November fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. They revealed we needed to be forward on this project, and the major issues were addressed. The one negative, just from a negotiation standpoint, for the lack of a better word, is the per-unit proffer. And so we stand potentially under the current proffers, potentially, to, to get three point one million dollars if we don't build phase five, which is follow through where they build phase one, and we get the per-unit cash proffers. They would still get the tap fee credits, but... So that's, that's, that's the one negative. And of course, from the develop, developer's standpoint, he's sort of a, kind of a standstill with the current proffers, so that's one of the main reasons why he's proposing changes. And then there's the new proffer laws, which would be hard to justify that, I guess, the per-unit proffer amount we have today under today's law.
So moving back to your cap fee, so when you eliminate that one to ninety-nine issue there, so if they come in, begin the process of building, they'll pay the regular cap fee that is due at the time, regardless of what, if we, if we up it, they still pay that? That should be the same, is that what you're saying? It's twenty-eight thousand, then they'll pay twenty-eight thousand.
As proposed today, they, they would pay the full tap fee.
Full tap fee today under the new proffer.
Full ta, yeah, so it would be a, that was the major legal issue. And it was also, of course, subsidizing through the enterprise zone.
Basically, we're not, we're not blocking a, a new council later on that, you know, some of us leave to, they're still, whenever they come in, if they want, or the cap fees are ordered.
Right, that was, that was a big hurdle, now I'm getting to where we are here and removing that. And, and the trade-off was losing to the per-unit proffers, which then we could potentially get.
Did I misunderstand the last hundred and sixty? Does that mean we fork out a hundred, about one point six million dollars?
No, sir.
For all tap fees? And then we don't get paid till the, the next hundred and sixty?
Those, that was pertaining to the school proffers. So originally, they're, they were proffered five thousand five hundred dollars towards Warren County schools.
So every time a house is built, they have to have the proffers on.
They would write a check.
They have to have the tap fees.
They would pay five thousand five hundred dollars. Now, they don't pay anything for the first hundred and sixty, but then they pay eleven thousand.
That didn't come out of our cap?
That doesn't affect the town, I know. But that's, that's...
Something that they...
Really, with the county.
That's to offset schools.
Kids.
Kids, schools.
So it's a lot more complicated than this. I'm sure Doug could testify that. He's been, we've read these things a few times, and there's a lot of different interpretations and ways to read it and find a brand. I'd be glad to meet with anybody who wanna come to my office and go over things in deep detail.
I see a ten.
Bill, not gonna, we don't need to be concerned with...
Ten plus or less.
We can have to do it, huh?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I mean.
Jeremy, I didn't see the minutes from the planning commission. Was the group split call was in Amazon or...
Cian Davis was not in favor of it, everybody else was. And I think that was more because she had missed the last two work sessions, and so she just wasn't comfortable with the information, like everybody else was.
John, anything? Eric? Okay.
So we would need to hold a public hearing. We could either come back in another work session, or go ahead and discuss in a public hearing.
Whatever, put us in January, if we advertise now, yeah.
I don't wanna advertise till I'm sure what I'm gonna...
Pull it up in the February, if that's okay, what you want.
That's fine with me. I'm not willing to make a decision till I send the journey and go over this with a hard copy, because I've tried to read it on the iPad, it's like reading Braille. So I wanna go with that, and I wanna go with Jeremy, and then I'd like to see it come back to a work session.
All right.
I have just questions.
I'm fine, I've read through the proffers numerous times. I just wanna know the net, net change. Net dollar change, net change, which Jeremy's put up there, so.
When's the next work session, January sixth?
It's either the second or...
This presentation certainly helps to understand changes, Jeremy, and I appreciate that. Because before, we weren't getting that.
Give us a copy of the PowerPoint in your booklets.
Okay, don't meet with any... Thank you, Jeremy.
We'll have to put on work session on the sixth.
With those Energy Star, that was one question I had. What is Energy Star certification? Any builder has to have a certification, or you wouldn't let him build a house?
It, it's like for energy efficiency.
Okay, all right, I'm with you now.
It's like a special, extra thing that you can do.
All right, moving on to three, agreement between the towns and county for collection of fees paid online.
So I, I think this one's a lot simpler, other than first we've got the interguff system. And we're ready to start moving into the online component. We've been meeting with the county, and we, the town staff, and we've been meeting with the county staff. One of the issues with the program is it can only accept payments from one of the localities. So we've devised this, you know, the agreement, which would, so anything that, anytime someone pays a fee towards a town, that would get itemized and would be paid to the county, to the system, and then they would reimburse us on a quarterly basis. We, we're still probably mid-two thousand and eight before we actually have the online system operational. We will, we wanted to make sure we disagree with the council approval. It's already been approved by the board of super projectors.
Any questions? Bill?
I don't have a problem with memorandum of understanding. But all this is, is a program change to have, have a go between the town and other county, pay wherever, it's just a program change. And that's not even written in the memorandum of understanding. Eventually, somewhere down the road, you will get a program change, and that would change where you could accept it, or the county could accept it. Is that real, clear?
I'm not sure, I don't follow the questioning.
Right now, right now, I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with memorandum. Right now, right now, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with memorandum of understanding, again, all I'm saying is, it's a program change. A programmer can sit down, whoever developed the program can sit down and change it to where either the town or the county could accept the fee, and...
Yeah, and this is just to make sure everybody's approving that.
Like you're saying, that memorandum doesn't say, okay, we're going to proceed down the road to get a program change, to get, that it were either collect, or do you not want to do that?
This is now for them to collect now?
Now, mayor, I understand.
And then once the program comes, and they'll change?
They won't, they won't change the program, they can't, they're telling us they can't change the program if those people can accept it, if that's what you're saying. So it's not that simple.
But if something ever comes.
We're told that we have to, we can only use one locality to accept it. We're sort of in unusual circumstances, because we're putting two localities in the same system. It's written in the original agreement that if we ever decide to break away from the county, we get to retain our rights and have our own separate system, but right now, we're sharing the system with the county. So that's the problem, because we're sharing, we can't, we can only have one entity accept payments.
When you say one entity accept payment, you mean deposit in the one bank account?
Correct, they can only do one bank account, so we have to decide who's going to get the money, and it's simpler, the bond is a little bit heavier with the county.
So it's all still identified with your account number and everything else like that, and so we, we have all the dollars?
Oh, yeah, we're still going to get paid every cent, they're not going to charge us any administrative fees, finance strike, or integrate with the setup.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to run the payment to us monthly, so.
And we don't want to have to worry about the credit card fees either, they're part of the system.
I'll just ask a simple question, if you can get the thing, a program change to where you get either or, and if I misstated something here, I apologize, because I deal with programmers all the time.
Are you meaning having two bank accounts?
No.
I don't understand what you're asking.
You make the payment downstairs, you make it over to the county, and it goes in, and then you can transfer automatically. I'll go with this, I'm not trying to create a...
Basically, what you're saying is, you are not, when I could be collecting any money from zoning, it's all going to be paid through this.
When they, when someone spies online and pays that way, then it'll go into the county's bank account, and then they'll account that, do reporting, and pay us back.
If I come in there with a site plan for zoning requirements, can I pay you, and then I take your approval, that you give me the stamp of approval, and I take that back over to the county?
You, yeah, you can still pay us, but not online, you'd have to come in and pay us.
This is strictly an online.
We're only talking online, yeah.
But I can still do it individually, by hard copy, if I want, to you, and then back to the county.
Correct.
I understand exactly what Bill's talking about, we program, and that may come ten years from now, if they were, if they're able to do it, and we may not even be involved, and they have our own, you know.
It probably will come, but right now, this is not an option.
Yeah, yeah.
And the agreement allows us, within a ninety days, withdraw from it.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of very impressive stuff. They do basic things with programs, but unfortunately, this one couldn't. Okay, continue discussion, IT Federal, Royal Phoenix, and West Main Street Extension, planning the zoning. Again, Jeremy.
So we just got before the meeting some information on the, you had asked for a timeline, and that's for the design of the pump station and the construction, so in total, looking at between six and eight months.
From the minute we say go?
We've already, you've already said go for the designs, and so they're, they're already in route to design it, and then they've technically started.
Now, six to eight months?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
And so this we designed under the Department of Public Works specifications, and they've got the green light right now, they're going to begin, so we still have to decide who's going to be paying for the construction of the pump station.
So what do you need from council to make on that part of it?
Well, right now, we're just, at this point, we still need to make a decision on who's going to actually own that pumping station down there, considering for the cost. Right now, the biggest thing we've got right now is got the engineering design started, they're estimating about one month completion for the design process, so.
Council have enough information on the cost, or do you need more information? Gene?
Well, the question I have, you say, who's doing the design?
Panoni.
Now, Panoni's doing the design for us, or for Hattie Federal?
For us. Which is about ninety-two hundred dollars.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
That's when we move forward with that part.
And so, when this is all said and done, you're going to need two pump stations, according to what I understand, and this will be the first one to take care of the, on the northern side.
And more than, yeah, on the northern side, yes.
How many, how many lots would that cover, do you know? How many lots is in the front?
There was four thousand, some people would have to be working there to require another pump station.
Four thousand two hundred, yeah.
Say, well, what I'm getting at, now, say that when we get this thing started, and I saw the one and a half million dollars, that's for the road, is that just for that little section goes into Hattie Federal, or is that the project all the way through the actual site?
That's Phase One.
It's just Phase One?
Plus the pump station.
Oh, where the pump station at?
We adjusted it, we talked about that last time, adjusting the factor.
What I'm looking at is fact, now, whatever number of lots of that you say, that I can make there, now one lot on the southern, the southern side, then what happens?
And you have to save the second pumping station.
Well, I think, okay, I know, but what I'm saying is, I think, we should have looked at, look at this issue and talk to Jennifer, find out how she plans on marketing this thing, because I don't want to see us build a pumping station for one lot, and then have to build another pumping station within a year for another lot on the south side, and then the road becomes an issue.
Good question.
And we're still going to, right now, only lot six, IT Federal can develop.
I understand.
And so it's still going to come to you.
But this pump station should cover at least four or five lots, I didn't.
It may cover the whole site, and how many employees they get for the whole site. If they have two thousand employees, then one pump station goes seven or five.
Will the one pump station be at, where we can get all the lots? The sewer taps could go into the one pumping station, is that the way we're looking at it, have we decided, Jimmy, or Joe, somebody tell me that.
I think there's a, a design issue, other than, there's a couple issues, the ability for the existing infrastructure to the north going up into the village.
I understand.
Can't accommodate the entire building.
I understand that, but again, what I'm saying is, say you don't get forty-two hundred people, and then somebody on the south side wants to come in here without us having to build another pumping station, can they get a tap into this pumping station at any time after it's built?
So I think that's a question we're going to have to come back.
I mean, you know what I'm going to get there.
I understand what you're saying, there was something said about the grades of the north and the south side also, but I...
Well, I'd like to see it, if you're going to do it, get it deep enough for your pump station to cover the whole project, even though it may not need that, and you may need a pumping station, to make sure that it's got the capability of being deep enough to get all the taps on all the lots into the one pumping station, that might keep us from building a second in the future. This thing doesn't, this thing doesn't materialize at forty-two hundred feet.
We were told that that was an issue, though, because they can't dig, pull it a ten feet on the site.
Yeah, ten feet on the site, but the, you...
So that was another reason why they had to be two.
Is that, is that on the whole site, or is that just?
That's the whole site.
Even up, up in the area where the office space is that?
Ten feet.
Now, that's not up in the area where the office is on, can we design it somewhere up front, along where the offices are at now, either the east or the west side of that? It's ten feet over where they took out all the infrastructure, yeah, I know that, but there was an area next to the building where the offices are now with the EBA and them that was not contaminated. If we could design it up far enough on this side, either on the east or the west side of the present structure out there, and we may not be, have to have that, a ten foot might not apply at that point.
I would be afraid to even assume that that would be allowed on the ten feet, because all we've, all we've given.
But I think it's very important.
I guess we'll find out, Joe.
Yeah, I'll have to get with Joe.
If it's a blanket that covers, I guess, the police department, I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't think it includes the police department lot.
I think that's outside the rim.
Right, but I did, for me, my, my assumption is, my understanding is, that all six lots down there has that ten-foot restriction of disturbing earth.
And I guess.
But I don't know about what you're talking about on my side.
Yeah, but you bring the pump station closer to the existing building, which there was no contamination along that area, then if we could get it down a little deeper.
Depends on what lot that one's on, you know, it depends on where the lot lies.
I understand, I understand, that's what I'm saying.
Well, we'll find out, Joe.
I'd like to find out for sure, because it'll save us from building two pumping stations.
I agree.
And also, maybe just to verify and make sure we pump north, pump south. Maybe go to pump south, pump it down to the Luray Bug Landing, maybe, I don't know, Jimmy, it's something that you guys, I can look up for elevation, sure would be easier to pump downhill than would be uphill.
And the other thing not to forget, we do have five hundred thousand dollar grant towards that first phase of West Main.
A hundred and fifty from IT.
And supposedly a hundred and fifty magnitude.
Yeah.
So the one and a half million doesn't include that payment?
It should, doesn't that six, five hundred thousand grant included in that one and a half million, do you know, Jeremy?
No, this is pure cause, so it isn't considered revenue or anything.
All right, so.
It would be deducted off the fee.
Deducted off.
So this would be roughly about a million dollars then.
And then when you deduct the four hundred fifty, five hundred for the, what is it, the pumping station, and we're bringing it reality to the road down to...
You might have said this, but we'll be able to collect tap fees on that in the future.
Actually, Joe, and I talked about it today, we may have to structure some other type of tap fee for a pumping station, we don't know yet, so...
For future developments.
Yes.
So we're...
We don't have any other sites.
Right, so we're at very low cost of it today, and then...
Yes, if that's where council is meaningful to, and I think you know where I stand, we're in the sewer business, and we should put in, install, and collect tap fees like we do any other service line.
One last, oh, sorry, one last question then, was, I thought, we heard last time too, that IT Federal was building their own pump station?
It's flip flopped.
So that is...
They were waiting on this one now, and then the hundred fifty's going to go to the road instead of to their pumping station.
So they're no longer building a smaller pumping station for themselves?
They're waiting on us to conclude what we're going to do so they can move forward.
That was correct, Joe.
Yeah, they, basically what they did was, is they took ownership of the pumping station to get the site plan approved, or zoning and stuff, everything approved, so that's why they did that, because I would not give the permission, saying town was going to build it, so they had...
The EDA took control.
The EDA took control of that kind of station.
Gene, what do you think about zoning and building and maintaining and collecting tap fees? Jake? Bill?
Only way to go.
John, only way to go.
I have one other question, though.
Yes, sir.
On the Main Street extension that you were talking about before, do you know roughly how long that first phase is, with that one point four million price tag on there? I remember it was close to sixty percent of the, the site?
If you go under the box file, and you pull the site plan for IT Federal, it shows that's Phase One, so you can see the road there, it goes to a cul-de-sac just past IT Federal.
We do have somewhere on this thing, a whole design and living plan.
All right, Joe, got an answer. Crescent Road Bridge update, town manager.
Yeah, mayor and council, I wanted to bring everybody up to date, I've been working with Chad Thomas, with Madison and Craig, trying to evaluate the recent bids for the Crescent Road Bridge project. As you're aware, we, on our last bid, we got two bidders, with the lowest bid still being one point three million dollars. I did have Chad go back and revise the construction numbers from the previous PER study, which was at six hundred thousand. He reevaluated the construction costs and said it should be, today's dollar should be around eight hundred and sixty thousand, but it's still far from the one point three million that we got for lowest bidder. Trying to talk to both vendors, they were not very forthcoming, the lowest bidder said, well, I've won this job twice, are we negotiating? So at this point, I had to back off, because they were wanting to negotiate at that point, they weren't really in the mood for talking. So we're basically at, at a junction point here, it would be my recommendation that we hold off and re-advertise in March, for the simple reason, I don't think I can negotiate with the delta between the one point three million and where we think that price is going to be about eight fifty, eight sixty, I just don't think I can get there with that vendor. Not to say that that price won't come back in, in March, at one point three million, but if we're still looking at the prime construction time, which is when school's out, which is from June to August, in that timeframe, we're really not gaining any time by trying, trying to negotiate a secure contract.
So you need council to allow you to re-bid early spring, as your request?
Right now, I'm just, want to get an idea of what council's thoughts are, if they would like me to try to engage and negotiate.
We already said that, I already said, said that much so, wait till spring. I'm just going to check on that one portion, whether or not they have to build a temporary crossover.
Right.
And I thought we'd already give you the group to go ahead and wait till spring, and change the specs that they don't have to build a crossover bridge during construction, because it's not going to be but a, what, a sixty-day project or less.
Right, and like I said, I was unsuccessful in getting the vendor to tell me that that was the reason why the prices were the way they were.
Now, that is going to be removed.
Yes, sir, I will be.
The new specs that you're going to sit down and...
I will hear them. But I just basically wanted to give council an update where I was, because I had recently been talking with Chad Thomas, and got some new fresh numbers for construction, and what, what my opinion is, the way we should move forward.
Well, that's basically what councilman T. Walter and I picked up in our discussions, and your eight sixty number was more realistic.
Right.
And that's what we heard from our engineering firm, so whether we negotiate or we wait, what's your recommendation?
Well, my recommendation is to wait till March, re-advertise, and then go from there.
I'm, I'm for the change that the three of us discussed in the contract, so.
Oh, they, that has to be changed, that was an oversight on staff's part, and that will be corrected.
Would it be better to advertise it more in February, since March is going to be tough on construction?
Yeah, and, and that's for sure, that, that's not a problem, to advertise in, in late February.
Mile weather, yeah.
Anybody have any objections, Joe? Okay, go.
Okay.
Re-advertise. All right, number six. Gene and Jake, your time is up. Finance committee, your term expires this month, the thirty-first.
Don't mess so quick.
You guys like to be interviewed, or would you like to? Well, I guess, I guess I'm not thought out, is anyone else interested in serving on the audit in the finance committee? Or should we like to just keep Gene and Jake up there, if they would like to be there?
Speak now, for everyone's peace.
It's a huge decision, but...
Hey, you are Russell for it.
Maybe I'll lean out, I'm for leaving them, I'm for leaving them.
Can I say something before you say?
Sure, go ahead.
Regardless of who is appointed on this, anybody can come to the meeting, they could tell you all five of us that we do, but we have to have it after such, but, you know, again, and just because Jake and I are on the committee, doesn't mean that you guys can come as well this evening, Friday evening, so.
And we always advertise at this, or post to the public meetings, we don't never feel like to be here.
And we had four members last time, I had myself, councilman Seal, and so, sounds like they want some more punishment.
Yeah, generally, I can't consistently make it at the six o'clock time, so otherwise, I mean, generally, if you guys are doing it, I'd love to be here, but I don't want to be halfway through, you know, so.
Well, I'm willing to re-serve again, if you all want to.
Hey, I'm all for it, I'm good with it, I've asked the council. All right, let's move on to Joint Tourism Advisory Committee recommendations. Alicia? Didn't have your name here, but I'll tag you in there with it. Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, keeping the copy busy. Well, this is the follow-up from our last meeting, you'd asked me... You'll see attached there, I am recommending, wholeheartedly, Gary Green, who owns the mountain trails here in town, and the one in Winchester, along with Carrie Barnhart, who you all have met, as the property owner of a couple of the Main Street properties here. Both of them, you'll see from their recommendation, or excuse me, from their sheets that we included, their backgrounds, how they relate to tourism. Gary and I have actually started already working on a couple of projects for the town itself. Carrie clearly.
Is Gary the tall one or is she tall?
Gary's the tall, the owner.
Okay. Now I know who it is.
Okay, all right. Carrie, Carrie and her husband clearly get it from a tourism standpoint, with regards to even their renters agreements. They're, they're requiring their businesses to be open X number of hours per week, definitely on the weekends. They understand the need for the businesses to be open, understand the needs, what the driving force is with the tourism. The third one, third recommendation, or the third person that we have to fill is, I'm asking us to hold off on that. That has to be a representative from the lodging industry, and right now, the Akins Group, who has, owns both the Hampton Inn and will be completing the Marriott, they are in transition. Their last regional person has just left Chihuahua, and they will be filling that closer to the completion of the Marriott. So when they have that person in position, that's when I would come back and recommend.
I talked to the guy at Hampton Inn, and he didn't say one word. I had talked to him today before, in regard to that, but he seemed like he might have been there.
The, the front office manager?
I don't remember his name, I never talked to him, that function, I think it was the chairman of commerce function.
And that would be the, that would be, because the Hampton Inn is owned by the Akins.
Yeah, I didn't.
Yes, yeah, because right now, they just have a front office manager, and he's not there all the time.
So Gary and Carrie are good with this, they've already been.
Correct, they, you see both.
The Akins Group have not been.
I'm sorry?
The Akins Group has.
No, once they took that position. But yes, the letter, there's cover letters in there from both Gary and Carrie expressing their interest in serving on this committee. Understand the commitment to the board here.
The first I talked to, he go along with the project?
Well, I'm not sure who, Chihuahua, who was there, is, I don't know who you, you were saying, you talked to a gentleman. I'm not sure who that was.
She was over all.
Chihuahua Campbell was over all of them.
Yeah, she was over all.
She managed.
Because I've spoken to her several times, and they had, they had different individuals that are in charge of running operations daily.
Well, yeah.
I met them all, too, but I couldn't remember who they all were.
I just thought it was a man that I talked to.
And it could have been, you know, from the, the front office manager.
Who I talked to.
Yeah, because they have, have the managers that actually manage, she overseens, like supervisor. Everybody good with recommendations?
I think they're actually.
Looks like they're really good, because it puts the meat of it.
Are we going to go ahead and approve these two, and then maybe through the third, or wait for the third?
It's up to council. No, I would, I would prefer you to go ahead and approve these two, and then we can get the third question.
Does the county have anything?
I honestly, I don't know, Joe and I had talked about that today. Today, we do, both of us would like to get this started by the first of the year, so if we can get these folks approved, that would be, we can check.
I think we ought to go ahead and give a review of those and move on.
Sounds good, Joe.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Felicia.
Also, just, just as a.
Oh, yeah, one more.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Just wanted to let you know, a little bragging right here, as a member of the Shenandoah Valley Tourism Partnership, we're the ones who sponsor the Shenandoah Valley, or the Shenandoah Spirits Trail. Collectively, the nine organizations, the nine communities, we represent thirteen localities. We are sponsoring the DC Metro Cooking Show this weekend at the DC Convention Center. Thousands of people will be going through that. We are sponsoring the Beer Garden. So we've got fourteen of our vendors, Billy Clifton at Backroom Brewery being one of them, will be there on display, giving away some of her samples. And I've got some passes, if anybody would like to attend. I have the generic passes for the Saturday show, but it is at the DC Convention Center, and I can get you some of these passes if you'd like, but it's a real coup for us to be able to get there and be able to get many people to showcase our work that we have here in the Shenandoah Valley. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to council discussion goals.
I have one, Joe, and I can't remember if we decided to drop the whole process or not, is the lighting on Main Street from across from building to building. And we've, has that been a, is that a dead issue now?
Yeah, we haven't done anything since last year, if we did those last two strands down there. We originally had incorporated that into the CDVG with some new lighting posts. We can go back and re-entertain that and try another, another staff managing. The biggest issue was getting owners to sign the liability form, but towards the end of that process, we ended up, council decided to take the liability on our own, so we could re-entertain that again and see.
No, I just wonder what we still.
Yeah, we haven't done anything.
I'm not interested in reopening that process.
Okay. Anyone else? Jacob, you, oh, you got any answers?
I was going to say, thanks for having the lights replaced on that. It was funny, because I actually drove down the roadway early morning one day, and I was like, man, there's a lot of lights out there. And then the next morning, I was driving down, they're all replaced overnight, so it must have taken care of it right on, right away after that, so it was nice to see that.
Three weeks ago, we removed the property maintenance and put it back to work session. Jake, if you had any questions that you needed asked, Doug, Doug provided you with those answers, this council?
Have we gotten complete clarification on the, I got the answers on the advertising, whether or not they could be split. The, I have not seen, unless it's in my inbox, since I was looking at, I have not seen response to what Cole Pepper had done. We had asked for clarification on that, I don't know if that was dug or not, but if you recall, there's a footnote that referenced Cole Pepper splitting the property maintenance and Adopius, a specific portion related to dilapidated buildings, and there was a question about whether or not that was something that was enforceable without the rest of the code, and we were getting clarification on that.
I didn't understand that at all. What specifically is your question?
So.
It was a chart in, I think Jeremy's presentation, the intro presentation, that did a comparison of municipalities that had adopted some portion of the property maintenance code, and there was a footnote about Cole Pepper saying they'd only adopted, I think the property maintenance, a portion of the property maintenance code, not the rental inspection district.
Correct. And the reason why I was questioning that was because up to this point, I, I clearly could have misunderstood this, but I was under the impression that it was kind of an all or nothing deal, and that without the rental inspection portion of it, there was, you were unable to enforce the dilapidated building side of this, and so that's what we're supposed to be getting clarification on.
Yeah, so that you could make a motion on one side or the other side, correct?
Correct. So what I understand is that now that we know that this has been advertised separately, a motion could be made to separate these as two independent issues, adopt the property maintenance code, yes or no, adopt the rental inspection program, yes or no?
Dude, they can be separated, but.
That's, that's what you were saying, right, so that's the part I did understand in your correspondence, that now we know we can do that. The only other part I was missing was clarification on the Cole Pepper, and whether or not it was enforceable.
Gene?
Well, I'm interested in this dilapidated building, because we can't, we can't do it unless we get the proper codes in through this state legislature. All purpose of town, just like us, we've been told we cannot force somebody on the dilapidated building side, on the outside of the structure. The only thing we can do on the even property maintenance is on the inside, not the outside. That was the way I understood.
That's why we're asking for clarification.
That's what I'm saying, I just want to make sure.
I'll get a copy of Cole Pepper's ordinance and a copy of their charter, and maybe that they have the ability to do their charter, I'll just get both of mine.
So that's what we're asking Collins to bring forward on the.
Yeah, and he, he has told me he will sponsor it, he's already got it on the general assembly list to put it through, and Senator Ogbinshein may have been the correspondence with him.
Sorry, would it be, I know it's kind of putting cart before the horse, but if we adopted a code and we're having difficulty enforcing an aspect of it, would that be more incentive for delegate Collins to support us to be able to have the ability to enforce it? I'm just trying to think that one through, instead of waiting to see if it actually goes through on the state side of things.
It would, it would certainly be faster, because most likely, if the charter changes go through, it will not take effect until July first, and we don't know for sure if the charter changes will be passed by the general assembly. Last time we tried, it didn't work.
Bill?
As a sidebar, I, every time I come to this meeting, I hear about dilapidated buildings, and we have no rights to do anything. What is the county's role? If you got, I know, safety-wise, we can condemn a piece of property. Well, what is the county's role in dilapidation? They can certainly condemn. Now, does the town not apply in their jurisdiction, or how does that work?
We don't have a code enforcement officer, so we rely on the, we don't have a building official who can certify that.
But we don't, the county does.
Yes, so we rely on.
If we find a discrepancy, and I'll call it a discrepancy, could we not call on the county to enforce for us?
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Afternoon, they, and actually, I talked to Mr. Bean last week, because the word condemned was brought across the table by someone, and he said the county, that it's not in their codes to condemn, they deemed it unsafe, and they were ordered to board it up, and they made the building safe, and that's about what the county does with big dogs.
We tried it on Sixth Street, and he said it was tolerable.
Yeah.
And, but it had to be boarded up.
Presumably.
That's where we stood on that.
Anyway, I'm putting it back on the agenda, because it's hampering our future budget meetings. Yes, Karen?
I just, there's a little bit of confusion on derelict structures and the property maintenance code. These are two separate items in the state code, completely unrelated. Now, what you're talking about, T. Wall, is derelict structure ordinance, which only cities can adopt, but the property maintenance code is separate from that, and we can adopt a portion of the property maintenance code, like Cole Pepper has, but I'm not sure on the full extent of how that will help us address all of the issues. Certainly, there would be an additional layer of codes that we could, we could utilize, but that's something we'd have to look into more as far as how effective that would be.
So the specific footnote is, the town of Cole Pepper did not adopt the full property maintenance code, opting to only adopt the dilapidated structure portion of part three. That's separate from what you're talking about?
That, right there, is, is the property maintenance, because they only adopted a portion of it, and what T. Wall was talking about is a separate provision in the state code dealing with derelict structures, which is, doesn't have anything to do with the property maintenance code, it's separate city laws. So, yes, Cole Pepper, I think they were proposing a much bigger program, and then they scaled it back and just adopted that, which was something they could use to address just the worst.
And the inspections, the inspections are handled by the county of Cole Pepper, not the town.
So it probably would be good to interview somebody with Cole Pepper to see how effective that works.
And get a copy of it.
Anyway. So we can, I mean, we need, if you're thinking about next week, we need time to, I would like to read what Cole Pepper did with that. I'd like clarification on what we can enforce on that.
Yeah, it just seems that we're getting ready to start our budget, so we're going to need to find out if we're going to force this or not going to pass it, we're going to figure out what we're going to do with the monies that it's already been appropriated to it, to council members that wants to move forward. But, John?
Where do we stand right now? We've advertised, we've had the public hearing, we've done first reading, have we actually completed first reading?
No, we've not done first reading yet, no.
So we need to, we need to complete the first reading, so.
Yeah, yeah, we could, yeah, that would solve.
So there's still at least another three, well, we're in January again before it would come up for final approval. I guess the danger then is if it fails at the first reading, that it's done for a year, then that's it, so I can see that.
How long have we been working on this, Joe? Five months, six months, seven?
I started really on.
If you're realistic, it's been on the burner for a couple of years.
Yeah. Anyone else have any questions? Jake, are you good with that? We'll put it on for both.
No, I'm not, I mean, I need the, I need the information from Cole Pepper to understand, because, not that I don't want to say that I misled, but I've had a misunderstanding of what we can or can't do.
Put it on the work session.
That's what I'm looking for the clarification on.
Okay. We want to make sure that everybody is.
And I'd be okay, I mean, in theory, I'd be okay if it was first reading, but to councilman Conley's point.
If the first reading's going to be like.
So for instance, if this comes back and says, but if this comes back and says it's not enforceable, I mean, it's pretty much a new issue at that point, unless you.
Well, that's why I was asking.
It's a new issue, separate it out.
If he gets the information to you, is it okay if we put this thing to bed one way or the other?
If we're going to separate it out, you have to, you have to re-advertise everything, right?
No, we've already advertised.
That's my point, if, if we can't enforce it, and you got to put the two things together, why even separate them out? Versus if it, if it makes sense, well, we can't, because if it makes sense to separate them out, and there is that aspect of the property maintenance code, and this group needs to hear that, the work session before they ever pass a vote on that, because that's going to make a difference in everybody's vote, on whether or not we want to even adopt a property maintenance code.
And what is the brush, anyway? It's been that long already.
Well, we're getting in our budget, budget cycle.
You've already got a hundred and eighty thousand.
What do we have, seventy? Forty?
Forty?
I think it was sixty-five or?
Sixty-five was half.
Sixty-five is what we reserved in this year's current budget.
Planned on a hundred and eighty.
But we only budgeted sixty-five for half a year implementation.
So we have that money there that we need to find out if we need to move it forward before we have to make decisions on our budget. But yeah, we run due to six, I mean, that's no big deal, and that's, that's going to put us right at the beginning of the budget, so.
It's a fifteen thousand.
Fifteen, okay. Anybody else? Joe, you got anything?
No, I just wanted to make a formal apology to council, the mayor and council, about the event that happened Saturday at the tree lighting ceremony. It was just a communication error, the gentleman that was at the breaker, listening for the countdown, did not hear the countdown, there was a lot of people around him. We will make provisions next year that will not happen again. Once again, I do apologize.
Thank you, Joe. He got all tied up in all the excitement, because it was a huge crowd, probably the biggest that's probably all.
I love the declarations downtown, it looks absolutely beautiful. I was driving through with my family, and they're all pointing it out, and it was a really nice touch, I really, I like how they've gone above and beyond with that this year.
Okay, nothing else coming for council, this meeting is adjourned.